Council meeting to order, Monday, August the 4th at 7:03 PM. And certainly we want to welcome all of you that are with us this evening. If we could just take a moment for solid meditation, please. Thank you. Ask Councilman Brown if he would loosen the pledge.
All rise. I plead with allegiance to the Constitution of America, the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our
Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Mayor Bell, Mayor Pro Tim Cole-McFadden, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Kotati, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Moffett, and Councilmember Shul.
We have one proclamation tonight, and would like to present that to Police Chief Jose Lopez and I guess Kim Walker, whoever else Chief might bring up. As many of you know, may know, tomorrow night is National Night Out, a time when it's celebrated throughout the United States, and Durham has been, I guess, one of the leaders in this area. And what I'd like to do this evening is to present a proclamation to Chief Lopez and his staff. And to read is where it's on Tuesday, August the 5th, 2014, the City of Durham will observe the 34th, 31st Annual National Night Out, Americans' Night Out Against Crime, joining forces with more than 16,000 communities from all 50 United States, US territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide. Whereas NNO is a unique crime, drug, and violence prevention program that is sponsored annually by the National Association of Town Watch and spearheaded locally by the City of Durham Police Department, whereas the observance is supported by the Public Safety Forces of North Carolina Central University Police, Duke University Police, Durham County Sheriff's Office, and the City of Durham Fire Department, who are essential in helping to promote NNO and cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. Whereas National Night Out is supported by the active participation and in-kind services of City of Durham Departments, Community Agencies, and Businesses, who are committed to the city's mission to provide an excellent and sustainable quality of life. Whereas the Bull City Legacy Semi-Pro Basketball Team demonstrated ideals of police-community partnership by sponsoring a pre-National Night Out charity basketball game on July 31st, 2014. To support the Durham Police Department's Police Athletic League, they use the sports to create mentoring relations between officers and youth. Whereas in sort of Mayor William V. Bill Bell's 2014 Anti-Pa poverty campaign, National Night Out Neighborhood Coordinators, Police Department Employees, and Durham Target Stores are supporting Crayons Two Calculators Fill That Bus Campaign to Fight Crime and Illiteracy. Whereas the City of Durham debuted on the National Night Out Awards Scene in 2006. And each year following has consistently ranked among the nation's top 15 participating National Night Out Communities of comparable population. Whereas again, 2014, record numbers of Durham neighborhoods, businesses, and faith groups, community, and civic organizations are observing National Night Out, signifying their year-round commitment to promote police-community partnerships, crime, drug, and violence prevention, safety, and neighborhood unity. Now therefore, I, William V. Bill Bell, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August the 5th, 2014, as National Night Out in Durham, and do hereby call upon all citizens to join the Durham Police Department, its local law-enforcement partners, support community agencies, and the National Association of Town Watch and Target in supporting the 31st Annual National Night Out, and witness my hand and court seal to Durham, North Carolina, this fourth day of August, 2014. And we'll present this to Police Chief Jose Lopez and Carmen C. might have.
Thank you very much. I'm very hopeful that the entire community comes out to National Night Out tomorrow. It's always been a very good event, good for the community, we get to meet each other, and good for the city. In 2002, there were 30 sites for National Night Out. By 2006, thanks to Kimberly Walker, who actually is the face of National Night Out for the Durham Police Department, she's brought that number to over 100, and she's maintained that. And not only that, she's also kept us in the high, top 10s as far as national awards, and have brought a lot of neighborhoods into national awards also. So I really want to acknowledge her and commend her for all the great work she does. Doesn't do it overnight, she does it in many, many nights, and many, many days, and many, many months, and does an excellent job bringing it together and giving you an award-winning National Night Out. Let me present it.
Thank you, Chief Lopez, and I will defer most of my comments to Julie Marshall, who is the Executive Director of Crayons to Calculators. As you heard in the mayor's reading of the proclamation, we have entered into a partnership, a stronger partnership this year, to support the mayor's anti-poverty campaign by fighting crime and poverty, by helping our schoolteachers with school supplies, and fighting illiteracy. So at this time, I would like to ask Julie to come forth and make a few comments.
Thank you. This is very exciting for us to partner with the city in this way. My understanding is we have about 25 different sites who will be collecting supplies for the Fill That Bus Campaign. We have a goal of $75,000 worth of supplies that we'll be collecting through the middle of August. And it's particularly exciting to be working with the city because our founder is sitting here on your city council, Steve Shul, and one of our board members' husbands, Eugene Brown, and of course Durham Public Schools teacher, Eddie Davis. So this is a wonderful opportunity for us to partner with you and support the kids that need it. Right now, we have, we're adding one school right away, so we give monthly, teachers come and visit from Eastway, Fayetteville Street, Glenn, Aron Harris, Holt, Lakewood, Spalding, and then we're adding Merrick Moore this year. So those teachers get school supplies throughout the entire year to make sure their kids have the tools that they need. So we hope that you all will all put some supplies in the bins in your neighborhood, and we look forward to growing this partnership. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize any council persons for comments that they might have. We're all coming off of vacations, so I don't know if they might have got anything to say. Okay, Mayor Pro Tim.
Good evening, everyone. My life has not been the same. And now it is going back into fulfillment because I'm in the presence of this august body. Good to be back. And I was out, as you know, because I was at a National League of Cities Human Development Meeting in St. Paul, Minnesota, and had a fabulous time. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, recognize the city manager for priority items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council, no priority items this evening.
Likewise, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to bring to the council's attention that I attended the North Carolina Association of Municipal Attorneys Summer Conference this past weekend, and had the true honor to present the Ernest H. Ball Lifetime Achievement Award in Municipal Law to former City Attorney Henry Blender. There have been 14 attorneys who have won that award, and three of them come from Durham: Claude Jones, Bill Thornton, and Mr. Blender. I've got some work to do to make it four, but we'll see where I am at the end of my career, but I know several of you had the opportunity to work with Henry, and it was a wonderful honor and a privilege to present him that evening. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. Recognize City Clerk.
No items. Mr. Mayor?
That being the case, we'll proceed with the agenda. First item being the administrative consent items, which may be passed with a single vote. If a councilperson or a member of the audience chooses to pull an item, we will discuss that item later in the agenda. As usual, I'll just read the heading of each one of the consent agenda items. Number one, the City Clerk's office, Durham Homeless Services Advisory Committee Appointment on departmental items under Audit Services Department. Item two, Crime Statistics Performance Audit, June 2014. I'm not. Sorry about that. Item one is approval of City Council Minutes, to approve City Council Minutes for May 5th, 2014, City Council Meeting, May 8th, City Council Work Session, May 19th, 2014, City Council Meeting, and et cetera. Item two is the Equal Business Opportunity Program Advisory Committee Appointment. Item three A is the Durham Cultural Advisory Board Appointments. Item four, Citizens Advisory Committee Appointments. Item six is Homeless Services Advisory Committee Appointment. Item eight through nine are items that can be found on the General Business Agenda. Item 10 is Recreation Advisory Commission Appointments. Item 11 is Housing Appeals Board Appointment. Item 12 is Workforce Development Board Appointments. Item 13 is Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Appointment. Item 14 is Durham Board of Adjustment Appointment. Item 15 is the Bid Report for May 2014. Item 16 is the Bid Report for June 2014. Item 17 is Street and Infrastructure Acceptances. Item 18 is Raleigh-Durham International Airport Federal Aviation Administration Grant Offer for Terminal One Aircraft Apron Rehabilitation. Item 19 is to piggyback purchase four automated refuse collection trucks. Item 20 is bids for the Fire Department Self-Contain breathing apparatus. Item 21 is selection of financial advisor. Item 22 is contract between Musco Sports Lighting LLC and the City of Durham for sports lighting at Snow Hill Road Park Soccer Fields. Item 23 is sale of property between the City of Durham and the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the whitening of Old Oxford Road at Dan Ute Lane, parcel number 172089. Item 24 is sale, title, lease, and license agreement with Altel Communications LLC doing business as Verizon Wireless. Item 25 is the Planning Department FY15 Work Program. Item 26 is stormwater retrofit project with North Carolina State University for regenerative stormwater conveyance. Item 27 is U-0071 Eastern Connector Norfolk Southern Railroad Permit. Item 28 is WBS 41731 North Carolina Department of Transportation Roundabout Herndon, Barbie, and Massey Chapel. Item 29 is license agreement with Swift Avenue FCA LLC. Item 30 is proposed fee ordinance amendments for the Solid Waste Management Department. Item 31 is control parking residential area 1300. Could we hold that, Mr. Mayor? That's what it's... Thirty-one? I'll pull that. Okay. Item 32 is Department of Water Management On-Call Master Service Agreement. Item 33 is Durham Downtown Loop Waterline Replacement Construction Contract, J.F. Wickelson Contracting Company, Inc. And item 36 through 38 are items that can be found on the General Business Agenda as public hearings. Intain a motion for the approval of consent agenda items, with the exception of consent agenda item 31. It's been properly moved in seconds. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Let me get back to my agenda, if I can find it. The Durham, on the General Business Agenda, item three B is the Durham Culture Advisory Board Appointments. And I guess we all have ballots for the Durham Culture Advisory Board Appointment. We have ballots for the Durham Planning Commission Appointment, and we have ballots for the Human Relations Commission Appointment. So what, you turn them in? Okay. You want to count them before you get mine?
I beg your pardon?
I was just joking. I'll turn mine in. Let's move on to the...
Yes, I'll get it later.
No, I can move on. Under General Business Agenda, public hearings, item 36 Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment Technical Changes, ATC 13000001.
Thank you very much, Michael Stock with the Planning Department. Before I begin, I would like to state that all required notifications and advertisements have taken place for this public hearing, and they are on file for record. TC 130001 is a text amendment that would make technical revisions and minor policy changes to various provisions of the Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO. The amendments that are within Attachment A of your agenda packet are grouped into three categories. Amendments necessary to comply with state or federal regulations. Second category amendments identified as necessary corrections, clarifications, reorganization, or other minor changes to more accurately comply with the intent of the regulations or codify interpretations. And additional corrections or clarifications from review of standards that were established through the changes to discretionary regulations as approved through text amendment TC 110007. The Planning Commission recommended approval, 11 to 0, of the text amendment on May 13th, 2014. Thank you, and be happy to answer any questions.
You've heard the staff report, this is a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing to be open. Would ask comments from the members of the council first. This being a public hearing, let me ask, is there anyone in the public that wants to speak on this item? Let the record reflect, no one in the public asked to speak on the item. I would declare the public hearing to be closed, matters back for the council. It's been properly moved in seconds. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
Item 37, zoning map change, 2919 Fayetteville Street, Z1400003.
Good evening, Steve Medlin with the Durham City County Planning Department. I would like to certify for the record that proper notification in accordance with both state statutes and unified development ordinance have been performed, and that affidavits to effect are part of the case file. Case, zoning case Z140003, 2919 Fayetteville, is a request to change the zoning designation of 1.409 acre tract located at 2919 Fayetteville Street, between Fayetteville Street Elementary School and the American Tobacco Trail. From office institutional to commercial neighborhood to allow a range of commercial retail uses, including a potential laundromat, there are no development, excuse me, there is no development plan associated with this request. However, this request is consistent with the future land use designation of the conference plan, which designates the site for commercial. Staff has determined that this request is consistent with the conference plan and other policies and ordinances, and the Planning Commission recommended approval on June 10th of this year by a vote of 10 to 0. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Again, this is a public hearing. I would declare the public hearing to be open. Would ask other questions by members of the council on the staff report. Is there anyone in the public that wants to speak on this item? Item 37, zoning map change, 2919 Fayetteville Street. Let the record indicate that no one in the public asked to speak on this item. I would declare the public hearing to be closed, matters back for the council. It's been properly moved in seconds. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
Let me say before we move to the next item, Madam Clerk, will you hold up reading those votes, because there's a person that wants to speak on item nine?
Okay.
Item 38, zoning map change, Harmony Road 2 revisions, Z1400008.
Good evening, Steve Medlin, again with the Planning Department. Would like to certify for the record that all proper notice has been made in accordance with both state statute and unified development ordinance standards, and that affidavits to this effect are part of the case file. Zoning case Z140008, Harmony Road 2 revisions, is a request to change proffered committed elements from the existing development plan of record. The zoning designation of the site will remain as Plan Density Residential 2.710. This development plan was originally approved by the City Council on June 19th of 2006. The existing development plan governing the site allows a residential subdivision of a maximum of 185 units, and is currently under construction. The development plan associated with this zoning district includes a number of tax commitments. The applicant is requested to make the following changes. First, remove a tax commitment that would require the construction of an off-site asphalt trail connection from the property to the Woodcroft Community Trail System. Second, remove a tax commitment that would require the construction of an onsite mulch trail along the southern boundary of the site. And third, modify the timing mechanism for three tax commitments relative to infrastructure improvements, sidewalks, and traffic calming devices that will allow the staff to track and ensure compliance with these commitments. Staff has determined that this request is consistent with the conference plan and other policies and ordinances. Planning Commission recommended approval on June 10th by a vote of 7 to 3. I'll be happy to answer any questions, council may have.
Yeah, this is a public hearing. I would declare the public hearing to be open. Would ask first other questions by members of the council and the staff report. If not, we have two persons that have signed to speak on this item, and both are speaking as proponents of the proposed revision. I would ask of the other persons that may want to speak on this item that have not signed up, this being a public hearing. If not, we're here from Patrick Biker and Mark Avatably. I know I screwed up that name.
That's correct.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me say, for this item, we have 10 minutes.
Should only be five. Good evening, Mayor Bell, Members of the City Council. My name is Patrick Biker, I live at 2614 Stewart Drive. I'm an attorney with Morningstar Law Group in Durham. I'm here tonight representing Standard Pacific, the developer of Chamberlain, a single-family neighborhood located off of Harmony Road. We are requesting your approval for a couple minor modifications of the 2005 development plan for this neighborhood, which was approved as KZ 05-32. With me tonight from Standard Pacific is Mr. Gray Methvin, who is the Land Development Director for our region. At the outset, on behalf of Standard Pacific, we want to say thank you to the residents of Chamberlain, who are here tonight in support of this rezoning. We really do not have anything substantive to add to what the planning director said, except to note that the people representing these two fine neighborhoods did try hard to work out this trail connection. In regard to both trails reflected in committed elements 12 and 18 from the 2005 development plan, I think it is important to allow the affected homeowners to have their perspectives honored. Therefore, we respectfully request that the council approve this rezoning to eliminate committed elements 12 and 18, which were perhaps improvidently adopted about eight or nine years ago. In conclusion, we do want to emphasize that Chamberlain was a neighborhood that went into foreclosure during the Great Recession. Standard Pacific bought this property from a bank, and now is building what I think are very nice homes in Chamberlain, and this has created many construction-related jobs. We would like to keep this momentum going, and so we hope all of you will vote to approve this case that's before you tonight. We very much appreciate your time, we'll be happy to try and answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. The next person that has signed to speak. If you could pronounce your name, please.
Yeah, absolutely, you got to correct. It's Mark Avatably.
All right, good.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm at 128 Victorian Oaks Drive, which is within the Chamberlain subdivision that we're talking about tonight. And I'm a homeowner in Chamberlain, I represent a newly-formed Recreation Fund Committee, not fund, but fund committee. And what I'd like to do is just show support, not only of myself, but the committee that I represent, and homeowners within Chamberlain, which probably numbers approximately 100 so far, as the community is not fully completed yet. But the developer, despite having the initial requirement of building this connector trail, has worked very diligently with myself and other members of the community to try to do what's best for everybody. They have offered to use the budget that they had set aside for this trail, this connector trail, and provide those funds to the Chamberlain Homeowners Association for uses that we will determine as a Recreation Fund Committee through the Homeowners Association as the months and years progress, for needs that we think are best appropriate for our community. So given the circumstances that the Woodcroft community doesn't desire to have this connector trail, and it's been difficult to make everything work out, as was originally planned seven or eight years ago when these requirements came in, I just want to recommend to the council that the changes be approved. council that the changes be approved as desired by Standard Pacific, as represented by Patrick Biker. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. But before I do, if people in my community could stand who are in support of this change... So we've got probably twenty, twenty-five of us, which isn't too bad for a community of about a hundred. Thank you. Any questions for me in particular?
No, we appreciate your comment and certainly appreciate the fact that it's an opportunity for the community and developers to come together in agreement on a zoning matter. That doesn't happen very often, but we're appreciative of it when it does happen. Let me ask other questions by members of the council. Recognize Councilman Katani.
Thank you, Mayor. Oops, excuse me. Can I ask staff to pull up Attachment eleven, which is number twelve on our agenda? It's the map. You don't have it. Is there any way to pull it up for everybody? Okay.
Actually, there would be one.
Sure.
I apologize.
No, it's, I could have told you I was going to do it.
No, no, it's fine. I may actually have it. Are you referring to?
It's number twelve, but it's attachment eleven? Okay. All right. I have several comments and questions, but basically the map that's coming up now shows the committed elements and the segments and the neighborhoods, and I just wanted to point out where both neighborhoods were and also ask some questions about the trails. But I can say while we're waiting, just that in general, I'm generally opposed to removing committed elements, especially trail connections, and I'm going to explain why. This was a pretty controversial rezoning at the time, and the additional committed elements really helped gain community and council support for the rezoning. So I, you know, there was a reason why these came through. So here's the map. Thank you. Mr. Medlin, can you just point out, since I assume most people can't read the color coding there on the slide?
Sure. The applicant is requesting that the area magenta, which is a short section running south from Shadowhawk down to the property line of the project, and then the red that you see here be removed as a commitment from the development plan. That portion is onsite, that portion was offsite, but was located within the homeowners association commonly held properties for the Woodcroft project. They are asking, also asking that the blue area that you see here, which was a mulch trail, be removed as a committed element. They have already dedicated this green area, which is the future Greenway Trail, which bisects their property, which ultimately potentially will tie in when the Third Fork Tributary Trail is ultimately constructed at some time in the future.
Right. Thank you. So, specific to this, okay. So, Mr. Medlin, the dotted blue line in the upper right corner, that is still on our proposed trail maps?
It is, yes.
Okay. So this is part of the dilemma with the green line and the dotted blue line. Without the red segment, it doesn't connect to the rest of the Third Fork Creek Tributary Trail. And I'll just say that in general, our community is really asking for, our citizens are asking for and demanding additional trails and sidewalks, and we are woefully underfunded in that sense. I do believe that these are appropriate connections and important. I also appreciate the neighborhood's concerns, but I'm just trying to explain where I'm coming from. I did want to ask the applicant if you could provide an estimated cost of constructing each of these segments?
I think Councilmember Katani, the only number that I'm aware of for the magenta and the red was approximately seventy-five thousand dollars for that connection. And that's, I believe, Mr. Avatably referred to that number as well.
For both, to construct the two of those?
Yes, correct.
And what about the blue mulch trail?
I don't know what that was.
Okay. So, I guess my other question is, given that the city is, city and county for that matter, in desperate need of funding for additional trails and sidewalks, I appreciate that you've discussed with the neighborhood, providing money for their recreation fund. Have you considered a contribution to the city or a local trails nonprofit, such as the Rails Trails Conservancy or others, to support our trail network?
I'm afraid we're not in a position to do that, Councilmember Katani. We had an agreement with the neighborhood to use the funds that were allocated for what you see on the map there, and that's going to be used as the neighborhood sees fit.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm going to stop and see if my colleagues have questions. But again, I do see trails as a community priority, and I do think this was something that the community originally wanted. I understand why you don't want to, but I'm really torn and challenged on this one. Thank you.
Okay, I recognize Councilman Moffitt and Councilman Shul.
Mr. Medlin, the green line and the red line, given that there's dashed blue line on each side of them, if they were not on the map as committed elements, would they be on the map as proposed Third Fork Tributary Trail?
The dashed blue lines are not actually dedicated Greenway easements. They are the alignment for the future tributary Greenway alignment. So those have not been dedicated. Only the green line has been dedicated at this point.
Like, what I'm asking though is, on our maps of future Third Fork Trail, where the red, the red line is?
Would be a blue dashed line.
Would be a blue dashed line. So, it's either built now or it's built in the future when, at city expense, when the Third Fork Trail is developed. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask the applicant, what does "as the neighborhood sees fit" mean? In other words, first is, where's the commitment? I didn't see a related committed element here. So if they come back to us and say, hey, you got to make them do it, how do we enforce it?
We have a signed agreement with the committee that Mr. Avatably referred to, signed by Standard Pacific and by seven members of the neighborhood, which constitute the Recreation Fund Committee. And so that, that committee, as time moves forward, will allocate the resources to, could be additional landscaping, it could be basketball hoops, it could be whatever the neighborhood decides is appropriate for their common area.
And does the, does the agreement call for the developer to do the work up to seventy-five thousand dollars worth?
The, the agreement calls for the developer to implement the recommendations of the neighborhood, less the costs of obtaining this rezoning approval. Landscaping, landscape and architecture consultants, those legal fees, those types of things. So we're trying to minimize that in order to maximize the resources available for the neighborhood and their common area.
And is that money going to be spent within what is shaded?
Right.
In the shaded area?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that Councilman Moffitt? Recognize Councilman Shul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been here, hadn't been here for a month, and I practically had, forgot how to turn on my machine. Yeah, so I'm also troubled by this, and Patrick, we've discussed this on the phone. So just a few comments. First of all, members of the neighborhood, thank you for being here, and we understand how important this is to you all, and it's great to see so many people out to participate in this. As I see it, there, there's several, you know, this is complicated. Normally, I would never vote for decommitting a commitment like this, because we do need these trails. What, what is different about this, and has given me pause, is that, a couple of different things. One is, as I understand it, the current property owner, the developers, bought this, bought this property after, I guess, out of foreclosure, at least out of the recession, and they had a commitment on the property which they had not made. The current developers had a commitment which they had not made, and in addition to which, the commitment was committing land which the previous developer, and hence the current developer, did not own. And requires a deal with another neighborhood to make happen. So, under those circumstances, I can certainly understand the difficulty the developer is placed in, and am appreciative of it. On the other hand, here's what troubles me. When we think about trails, it's, it's easy to think about them in two different ways. One is, the trail that runs directly by my house and right, you know, very near me, and maybe I'm worried about the security, as someone emailed me this evening, maybe one of you all. And as Mr. Biker has discussed with me, that he's heard the concern from the neighborhood. On the other hand, a trail is a community resource, and if you think about the American Tobacco Trail, if we had to wait until every single landowner along the American Tobacco Trail, which is, gosh, now twenty miles or something, you know, that, that we were, that we were only thinking about the exact security or the exact situation of everybody who was actually bordering the trail, we would never build the American Tobacco Trail. And so, this is a, this is a dilemma that our community faces all the time. I'll give you another example. Don pointed out to me the other day, I live on Club Boulevard, and we're discussing whether or not, how, should, what should be the sort of treatment about traffic in Club Boulevard? There's one thing that might benefit the neighborhood a lot more, and those of us directly on Club, but Club is also a major thoroughfare, and it needs to, we need to think about how the community benefits from that as well. And so, I'm just, I'm very torn by this. I, I, I don't like the idea of decommitting the elements. On the other hand, I do understand the current developer's dilemma. And, and I, and I feel, let me just say it like this. What concerns me is that the few people living nearest the, the trail have trumped every other benefit. This is a potential wonderful safe route to school. This trail, and as you see on this map, is, could be an incredible resource for everyone in your neighborhood and everyone in the, in the adjoining Woodcroft neighborhood. And I think it was Don that said, well, you know, maybe we'll have to do this, and Steve confirmed, you know, maybe this, we'll have to do this later at city expense. And so, I think that we've got a tough one here. I'm interested in anything that my colleagues, any light that they might have to shed on But I do think that I, I am very troubled by, by decommitting this element for what I think will be eventually a tremendous community resource. I mean, what we, what we don't have here, and what you see so, so much in Wake County, is these smaller trails which are going by neighborhoods, which are just absolutely amazing resources for people there, and they change the quality of life for the better. And so, I'm troubled that we might not have that in this situation when we could. So again, I'm interested in, in my colleagues' ideas and comments, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let me ask other.
Recognize Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patrick, could you, I guess, some of the opposition to this? And again, thanks so much for coming out this evening. This really means a lot, to have almost twenty-five percent of the homeowners in this neighborhood. Was it the Woodcroft, if you can expand, expand on this and help us out here, was it the Woodcroft Neighborhood Association who was opposed to some of this?
That's my understanding, Councilman Brown. I, my understanding is the council received a letter from the Woodcroft Community Association's attorney a few days ago stating that they were opposed, or, I don't mean to speak for them, the letter speaks for itself, and I apologize, I don't have a copy of the letter with me. But our folks, Standard Pacific, met with the Woodcroft Neighborhood Association almost a year, right, Gray? For the better part of a year, trying to find an alignment that was acceptable to them. And after almost a year of trying, the Woodcroft Community Association produced a letter that you received a few days ago, saying that they're just not interested. And so, I think everybody had good intentions around the table, but at the end of the day, they were not able to, we were not able to come up with an alignment that they found acceptable. And it's private property, at the end of the day, it's private property, and so in order to do anything, we would need a, an agreement from the private property owner. And they were not willing to give it, and so that's why we're here tonight. So, I apologize, I didn't bring a copy of that letter with me, but again, my understanding is you all received that last week, and it appeared to be pretty clear and unambiguous in terms of how the Woodcroft Community Association felt on this issue. I hope that answered your questions, sir.
And some of my colleagues can articulate what is to me the obvious, that trails really help communities and neighborhoods. But on the other hand, we've got a neighborhood here this evening, and then we have an additional neighborhood adjacent to this property that doesn't want this. So, I guess in some ways that makes the decision less difficult for me. Thank you.
Other, other questions, recognize Councilman Moffitt?
Can I get the spokesperson for the neighborhood, please? I have a question, question for you. When you come up, I'll, I'll expand, just very briefly. We have a neighborhood who's been fighting for two years to get trails built along West Elderberry Creek. They turned out, people, multiple meetings and... Can you, I, I'm not sure, if you said this, I apologize for not picking up on it. Why is the neighborhood opposed to the trail?
Our neighborhood?
Whatever neighborhood you represent.
I represent Chamberlain, and we are not necessarily opposed to the trail. Woodcroft, which is the adjacent neighborhood, is opposed to the trail, and therefore, as I understand it, I don't want to speak over what Patrick and Gray know better than I, but as, as I understand it, Standard Pacific worked diligently for over a year with Woodcroft to try to find a way to connect the part that would be in Chamberlain with the property that was behind some homeowners, and they would need to get grant and easement or something of that effect to get the trail completed. And Woodcroft would not give that authorization, so it doesn't make any sense for a trail to go to nowhere in our neighborhood that's a few hundred feet long. So with that in mind, Standard Pacific, the committed elements, as I understand it, is not only to build the trail on the Chamberlain side, but also on the Woodcroft side. And as a result, since it can't be done in any kind of effective way, that's when we came upon this agreement. Why don't we do something that's a win-win situation? Woodcroft doesn't really want it. We'd like to have it, but it's not going to happen most, most reasonably. So how about if we trade the budget and use it for the needs and interests of our community? And also, I'll mention that, as I understand it, the trail, you know, I live in the neighborhood, the trail does not snake through the entire Chamberlain neighborhood. So it just, you would still, if you are in Woodcroft and taking this trail, and I'll, I'll tell you that I do a lot of running and walking myself, I've used these trails. If you were in Woodcroft and dumped into the Chamberlain community, it would just end essentially on a, a street within our community. You'd still have to walk within our community to then connect with the tobacco trail or other trails in the Woodcroft or general area. And also, you can go about an additional quarter-mile walk and still connect with that same Woodcroft, Woodcroft trail on the other side of our neighborhood that connects with Woodcroft via city streets. So in, I think in most, for most people in the neighborhood who've commented on it, there's been really little loss, because an extra quarter-mile walk gets you where you would have been anyway.
Don, did you finish? I'll make one more, just a quick comment, which is that I, too, generally, I have a question to ask. I'm sorry, I just pulled up the aerial map, and I don't see any, are, do all the folks here live within the confines of Chamberlain now? All the folks here, so the aerial map that we have that show no houses there is just out of date? Okay.
They're very small houses.
They don't show up on the aerials that what it is? Okay. So I too am somewhat loathe that we move committed elements. I also, I know that the Bicycle and pedestrian Advisory Commission, which- which works really diligently on safe routes, see this as a safe route to schools, and I know that they feel there's a loss here with this trail being removed. And I also know that one of the things that we talk about a lot is the need for having facilities. And I recognize that there's some amount of money that's going to be spent on some kind of facilities, but the idea of getting out and being in community and fitness are all very important. That said, committed elements which require developers to do things which are not on their property are, in my opinion, I actually was on the planning commission, I believe, at the time this was approved, and I probably pushed for these committed elements. But at this point in time, I no longer support committed elements that are off of the property in question. So, reluctantly, I'll support the rezoning tonight. Thank you.
Recognize Councilman Katati and Councilman Shul, in that order.
Thank you, Mayor. Just following up on some of those points, and it's very helpful to know that you all hear from Chamberlain. I personally find it ironic, and I mean that with no disrespect to the Woodcroft community, that is built around a fabulous trail network. It is very much a selling point, it has increased their property values, and we have considered it visionary over the decades since that community has been built. I do appreciate that without these segments, you would still be able to do it on city streets. But we hear time and time again that people want off-road trails. They don't want their kids on city streets, or any streets for that matter. And in my communication with members of the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, they did note that the Ped-Bike connection from Chamberlain would go to Southwest Elementary and indirectly over the Woodcroft Trail Network to the Third Fork Creek Trail. So, I really see it as something important. One thing I wanted to suggest, because I do appreciate the challenge that the developer is facing, on the map, again, the area around the magenta and green lines, is that open space? Because would it be possible to consider a different trail connection perhaps over to Brynheyrst Tall Oaks, where it's not impacting any neighbors, you know, just sort of coming straight across, sort of perpendicular to the green line? I mean, I would like to see you perhaps go back to Woodcroft one more time and see if there is somewhere that would be amenable to them. I'm sort of looking straight at the corner there.
Yeah.
I just, it looks like it wouldn't affect any property owners there.
Right.
And it would provide a connection off-road. And it would connect through to Montauk, which already has community trails.
My under-
And it's a suggestion.
Yeah, we appreciate, my understanding is there's a BMP there, Councilmember Katati. So, it's already designated as a stormwater facility, if my understanding is correct, and it may be a little fuzzy, but I... We proposed, how many different alignments, Gray? I mean, I'm pretty sure we proposed that, and that was shot down. So, what we had, the magenta just happens to be the last alternate that was put forward that was not agreed to, but I think we must have put forward half a dozen, maybe that's exaggeration, four, five, and maybe six different alignments to connect the two neighborhoods, and none of them were acceptable. At the end of the day, this was just a representation to give you an understanding of where it ended up.
And is that negotiation happening with the original developer of Woodcroft? Or the individual property owners, or the neighborhood association?
The neighborhood association.
And, Mr. Medlin, is there any, I mean, what are the ramifications of not approving this rezoning? And can we put, I mean, we've had this issue before with connectivity, where neighborhoods have not wanted required UDO connections, so those are generally street connections. But do we, as a city, have some leverage to say this is required committed element? And any positive influence or even mediation role that we could play?
The short answer, Councilmember Katati, is that the existing zoning of record would be of record if you were not to approve the rezoning this evening, which means the developer would be subject to all the committed elements as they're currently drafted. It gets to be a little bit problematic in that a number of those committed elements do not have the appropriate enforcement or timing mechanisms attached to them, which is one of the things the applicant was trying to address this evening. The commitment as it relates to the trail connection does not have any timing element involved with it at all, which in essence means the developer could wait till the very last lot and then just elect not to build on that final lot, but never put that committed element in, and still be in compliance with their development plan.
I can ask Councilman Shul.
Thank you for those clarifying comments, Mr. Medlin. Sir, can you tell me your name again? I'm sorry, not you, Patrick, I know your name. Hi, Patrick.
Mark Avatabaly.
I'm sorry.
You can call me Mark, it's complicated.
Mr. Avatabaly. So, there really, a couple of, we've only addressed one of the, in this discussion, only one of the trails which there is a request to decommit. And the other is the mulch trail that is on the south edge of the property. And I wondered if your neighborhood has any, has had any comments on that, or that has not really been much of a discussion here?
To my knowledge, we have not discussed the mulch trail at all. I will mention one thing, because it seems like there's a little bit of a disconnect. As I understand it, the magenta, or purple, I guess is what I would call it, but I guess it's magenta, the trail that we're talking about that's supposed to be a paved trail, even if that is built, I recognize the interest in, again, connecting with trails within Woodcroft. But if you're a child, or walking your child from virtually any part of this Chamberlain community, unless you live in one of the 15 homes or so that's within about a, you know, a kid's stone throw away, you're still going to have to walk on sidewalks or city streets to get to this trail. So, in my view, from a pragmatic standpoint, to build the trail is really hardly any benefit at all, because there are so many ways that you can connect with trails near our neighborhood. And I walk on them every day. And in fact, the builder, I do have recognized, completed a sidewalk along Cook Road just a couple of weeks ago that had been a dead-end sidewalk going to no man's land. And he completed it probably 200 or 300 feet, and now it has a direct across-the-street pedestrian walkway to that Southwest Elementary. So, if you are in the neighborhood, you can walk on sidewalks all the way, go across Cook Road, walk on a sidewalk, and then have a proper crossway to that school.
If you, if the, if the Third Fork Creek Tributary Trail was completed, the dotted blue line, would you use it? You're a runner and a walker?
Let's see, I've got to put in my mind where that's connecting with.
I don't mean just, you know, okay, I'll take-
Yeah, I mean, I may, but to be perfectly honest, I'm the kind of person where if there's a trail, I'll probably use it, but if there isn't another, if there isn't a trail, I'll go on a different trail. It's not, it's not the end of the world to me. I'm frankly, one of the reasons I bought in Chamberlain, I knew nothing about this trail at the time. I know a lot of homeowners did know about the trail, and they were excited about it. But I chose this neighborhood instead of a different one because there were so many trails around it. And, but I didn't even expect something right in my neighborhood. I just liked the fact that there were a lot around me, so.
So, I won't make it so personal, let me put it another way. I think that if the Third Fork Creek Tributary Trail was built, it would be widely used. It goes through, look at the number of neighborhoods it goes through, just on this little part of the map. And, you know, this is a critical piece of it. Our neighborhood's fighting to get a trail. There's a trail that we would like to have built, and we're fighting to get it. And so, you know, again, I can see the developer's dilemma, and I can see that your neighborhood's situation, because this is really something that Woodcroft is denying, not you all. But especially after hearing Steve's description of the consequences, I'm inclined to keep the commitment. And I am hopeful that the Woodcroft neighborhood would, over time, reconsider this. No knowledge for sure that they would. I know that that would cost your neighborhood $75,000, and understand, in other kinds of amenities. And I understand that that might be something that, you know, you all could certainly use, any neighborhood could. But trails are priority for the whole community. I think that in the long run, we hope to have a much longer trail there. This will be a key segment, and so, that's what I'm thinking. But thank you very much for your-
You're welcome. Recognize Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could refer to you again as Mark. Could you give me an honest, not that you would not be honest, give me an appraisal of the conversations that have been held within your community and your community with Woodcroft about the issue of safety and security? Is that one of the bottom lines that we're dealing with here that pretty much are unspoken?
I would say that safety and security has been a very minimal or non-existing topic of conversation regarding this trail from the Chamberlain standpoint. I know Woodcroft, as I've heard through the grapevine, that's a very significant view from their standpoint, that they were, the homeowners immediately affected by the trail in their portion, they were worried about easier access to their homes. For our community, our conversations have been very deep and well-connected with Facebook pages. We had a separate meeting that remarkably, I have to give Standard Pacific credit, they called a meeting through our homeowners' association within about a 10-day period of time when this became a known issue. And they found a convenient time for everyone to meet, and we must have had 35, 40 members of our community attend that meeting, discuss what was going on and why, and what are some of the solutions that we could put in play to make it, again, a win-win situation? So, our community went from, if you read Facebook posts, from some people saying, "This is ridiculous, I moved into this neighborhood thinking there was going to be a trail, and I want a trail, we should push, 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 push for it," to, once they understood the circumstances, I would say, I mean, please tell me if I'm wrong, members of the community, but I would say with maybe the exception of one person, and even he is on our committee, is Brad here tonight? I think, there was one person who really wanted the trail, and he's a runner like I am. But after we talked about all of this and what Standard Pacific has done for our community, you know, builders don't always make things easy for, I know, you folks and for the people within the community. And I can't say enough about the builder. They've actually, this common area within our community, which has a playground and some other amenities, they have completely retooled it, and they're in the process today of putting about, I think it's 15,000 or 20,000 square feet of sod, and also remulching everything. They've added 50 or 60 trees, which I know has got to be a considerable expense, probably 30,000 or 40,000 or 50,000 dollars. And this was because, in that meeting that I just mentioned, people said, "Look, we think you should do more to our communities, other things that would be a little bit nicer. And this common area, we really aren't satisfied with, what can you do?" So, they came back with a proposal within a couple of days. We still wanted to tweak it, the committee that I'm on made some recommendations, "How about if we add a little bit more sod here, a little bit less, fewer trees here, change the trees in a different location?" And sure enough, within a few days, we got another revised proposal, and we've come to agreement with that. So, I would suggest that most of my community, who's taken any time at all to pay attention to this matter, has been very pleased with Standard Pacific. We would like them to be able to move forward, continue to be able to build homes. And I just think from a community standpoint, with Woodcroft and Chamberlain, this trail is a pretty minor point in the area of Woodcroft and in the Roxborough Street area and Juliet Avenue. There really are a lot of trails. Durham should be thankful for how many trails they have, because a lot of areas of the United States have virtually none. So, I can see why you would want to implement even more trails. But really, the practicality of this, to me, would be to let the community do what we really would like to have happen in a nice agreement with Standard Pacific.
Thank you.
I can ask Mayor Proton?
Is anyone here from Woodcroft? And were they notified of this item?
Everyone within 600 feet of the perimeter of this rezoning was provided first-class notice, as well as all neighborhood associations within 1,000 feet were provided notice as well.
Thank you, sir.
I can ask Councilman Shul.
Just wanted to tell my colleagues that I did locate the letter from Mr. Ryan Lockamy that you're referring to, Patrick, and I emailed it to you guys just now. So, if you want to look at it, there it is. Does anybody else want to copy?
Ask Councilman Brown.
Just a couple of points. A couple of points as we hopefully wind down on this discussion, which is, as my, some of my colleagues have articulated, it's in some ways a very complex issue. But on the other hand, it's, to me, commonsensical. And part of the irony for me, and I've been here almost 10 years, is that normally, residents of neighborhoods come here to oppose a development. I mean, this is really different this evening. And I really do appreciate those of you, and families as well, who have voted with your feet to come here tonight. That certainly means a lot to me. And as Mark was saying, I'm sure all of you have had heartfelt discussions and dialogue over this issue, and it seems like the neighborhood at least has come to a consensus. It also seems like Woodcroft, and that neighborhood has reached their own consensus through their neighborhood association. I also may say that I know that Standard Pacific has a very good reputation, noted for their high standards in building construction in the Triangle. So, I'm going to support this. But I do have one minor caveat, and I sort of want to speak for the neighborhood, the residents of the neighborhood who are here this evening. Patrick, I'm not trying to get too personal, but did you say that the Neighborhood Association or the neighbors would receive, was it 75,000? But then, did you add a little comma?
That was actually one of my finest moments at the neighborhood meeting, because we had $75,000 in the budget for this trail. And when they asked what the legal fees would be, I said it'd be approximately 74,000.
That's what I thought.
So, I thought that was a good deal for the neighborhood.
I mean, he's a good attorney, but he's high price.
No, we're doing everything we can to minimize the soft costs so that Mark's committee will have as much money as possible to implement the improvements that they'd like to see.
You heard it here, folks. You heard it here first, folks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I started out by saying it's good to see the developer and community come together. I thought it was going to be pretty quick. But it's been a healthy discussion, and I appreciate both sides of the argument. I guess my leaning towards this is to support the recommendation of the staff. I take very seriously public hearing matters, and I try not to make a decision until I've heard from the public. I appreciate Councilman Shul. I appreciate Councilman Shule sending the letter for Woodcroft, but I really omitted that. I guess the difference in what was done in Woodcroft today, the trails that were built in Woodcroft were built before people moved there. I mean, that was a part of the development. Here, we're talking about a neighborhood that's established and now you're talking about making some changes that obviously they aren't in support of. They've been able to come together with the developer to reach an agreement. Woodcroft is not in support of it. And we saw the planning commission report was not unanimous, but I think it was seven to three that I saw on there. So, my vote would be to go with the staff recommendation and unless there's further discussion, I'm going to call the question on this item.
Move the item.
It's been properly moved and second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? And I closed the public hearing. If I didn't, I should have closed the public hearing. Okay. You want to reopen it?
Open it.
Open it.
It passes five to two with Councilmember Katari voting no and Councilmember Shule voting no.
Move to the item that was...
Thank you.
Let's move to the item that was pulled and that was item thirty-one that Councilwoman Davis pulled and someone had also signed to speak on it, Linda Brown. And I'm still going to get to the Human Relations Commission appointment. Is Rafi Zaidi present? Is he still here? He is? Okay. At a point in time, I'll recognize you on the item. Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this because there have been telephone calls that I've received from people who live on Rosewood and I wanted to give Mrs. Brandon the opportunity to speak before the body before we take a vote on this issue. So, I think she may have signed up.
Sign up. You'd like to come forward now? You have three minutes if you come to the podium to the right.
I'm here tonight to ask that the council do not pass the ordinance for the controlled parking on Rosewood Street, especially the thirteen-hundred block. When I was at a meeting, a work session last Thursday, I was under the impression that the parking signs had already been approved. And when I read the paper on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, that's when I, to my surprise, I found out, wow, they haven't been approved, but they were out in the community. And I wanted to talk about that and this is what... And I also talked to Mr. Davis and Mr. Shule when I did find out about it. A lot of people were just really ecstatic that I made the front pages. But anyway, you know, I started talking about it amongst people that had opposed the signs and the main reason was because of the decals that you have to apply for here at the city, with the city. And no one wants to apply for these decals on a yearly basis. And these signs affect me pretty much and my family. And I want you to consider my dilemma with this program. I park curbside often because of my driveway inclines. When it sleet or snows, parking in the driveway is a bad idea. The existence of the signs with a decal, without a decal, limits my choice to park on the street permanently. My entire family is impacted by this CPRA program. Some members come on a regular basis to see my mother, eighty-eight, and spend precious time with her. These signs are not family-friendly in my opinion. Suddenly, we have to go apply for decals just to spend more time, just to spend more, just to spend time with my, with my, with my family. Now, these signs stipulate that if you park past two hours, that it's a possibility that you will get a citation. These signs were really put up to deter North Carolina Central students from parking. I understand that to a degree, but by putting these signs up, I also believe that be, that the city, if you've approved, there's a city council that's really helping North Carolina Central pay for, pay for the parking because now the students are forced to park there. You see what I'm saying? Because it costs seventy-five dollars for them to park on campus and that's why a lot of them that I've heard from park away from campus. Now, Rosewood Street is on the opposite side of the campus.
Yes, ma'am. You have two more minutes.
Okay. And I also want to say, I apologize for the short-sightedness of not knowing how government actually work, okay? But the main reason is the decals, the decals, because we have the Department, the Department of Motor Vehicles and that have, we have to apply for a license and a sticker every year for, to park. We have to get a driver's, we have our driver's license and then, I'm talking about the stickers, actually. We have to get a sticker every year. Now, we have to come and get a sticker from the city every year as well to just to park on our own street. And that is kind of, that's going to be kind of taxing for a lot of us. I mean, we have to take our, take our time to do this. I have a niece that attends Central and she parks in front of the house. I have a, she's going to school to be a doctor. I have a sister that's parked in front of the house. She's in graduate school. There are so many issues here with these signs and the reason I thought they were approved because I had a petition, which really was a letter that I had wrote to Ms. Carden in the Transportation Department. And in that, in that letter, I had people to sign opposing the signs because the decals. And then, there were, and then there were, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. I'm sorry. But anyway, Ms. Linda Hunt here, she was one of the people that signed to oppose it because she really thought the students should park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recognize Councilwoman Davis and Councilwoman Katari and then the Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'd like to ask the manager, in lieu of any other staffer who might be able to help us with this, is it possible for these stickers that Mrs. Brandon talked about to be ordered through the mail?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Keith Chetwell, Deputy City Manager. I'm unaware that that's been the normal distribution in the past, but it's not beyond our consideration to consider it. There's an objection about the convenience of getting the stickers issue. We'd be certainly happy to look at that as an option.
Thank you.
Recognize Councilwoman Katari and then the Mayor Pro Tem. Recognize the Mayor Pro Tem.
I have received so many calls from senior citizens in that area begging us to do something about the parking for years and years. And one, I know one citizen has called, everybody that she could think of in this organization. So, we've got to do something with that parking. I understand that your niece is in school, but the other citizens are concerned, truly concerned about the parking and it is sometimes even inhibiting their view as they try to move out of their own driveways. So, I'm certainly empathetic to that, empathetic to you too, but we've got to do something.
Recognize Councilwoman Katari. Okay. Recognize Councilwoman Brown, Councilwoman Shule, and then Councilwoman Katari.
I concur with the, Katari and the Mayor Pro Tem as well. And of course, we can't tell Central what to do any more than we can tell the Woodcroft neighborhood what to do, but even when we think they're doing something wrong. But, I would like to know, how large is the garage that was built for the nursing school? How large is it? And what percentage of the parking spaces are occupied? And then, thirdly, could there be some way that Central would agree to give access to the top level of the garage for students at a reduced rate? And I would suggest, Mr. Manager, that perhaps, certainly if the mayor agrees and others, we could at least write a letter to Central about this because this has been going on for a very long time. And I'm sure, well, I'm not sure, I would think that perhaps, what, twenty percent of those parking spaces are not utilized? And that could at least be a step forward in helping the issues that you've mentioned tonight.
Recognize Councilwoman Shule and Councilwoman Katari.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Brandon, I think that, the way I understand it is that when you came before us at the work session, you had originally been opposed to having the signs, but at the work session, you withdrew your opposition to that. And so, I think that is one of the reasons that we went ahead with this. I know we were interested in your opposition then, but I appreciate that, yeah. So, and I know that you have, it seems like you have two different problems. One of your problems or one of your challenges is that you have your niece who's going to Central and she needs a place to park and you would hope that she could park out in front of your house, but she doesn't live with you. So, you know, one thing I might suggest for her, especially if you have the decal and park in front, is that she could park in your driveway. I don't know if you've thought about that, but that would be available to her and presumably she's younger than you and me and maybe she could do a little better job, you know, negotiating your driveway. Okay. Well, that would be something you could think about. And I think that, I agree with the Mayor Pro Tem. I think that we have this situation and I agree with her assessment of it. I think it's something we should go ahead and do, but I'm also appreciative of your, Eddie bringing up the idea of being able to receive the decals by mail. I don't know if that's possible, but thank you, Keith, for raising the possibility we can at least look at that. I think that'd be worthwhile, so. I do plan to vote for it. I understand the situation that you're in and hopefully, maybe, we can ameliorate some of that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Recognize Councilwoman Katari.
Any other comments? If not, I'm going to call the question on that. I had, since Jean mentioned, I'd given Jean similar thoughts, but I didn't want to be meddling in Central's business, but, you know, I'm sure they charge the rates because they built the parking decks and got to pay for them. I guess my question would be how they're being occupied and, you know, they might get better occupancy if they lowered the rate and still might be able to get more people parking and help finance that parking deck, but that's Central's business. Any other, any other... Okay. The Mayor Pro Tem will bring it to attention, okay. If there are no further questions, I'm going to call the question on this item.
Move the item.
Second. It's been properly moved and second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passed a seven to zero.
Okay. We have this one item, which was a general business, general item, is item nine, appointment for the Human Relations Commission. Rafi Zaidi.
You have three minutes on the item.
Good evening, Mayor Bill, city council members. You know, this evening, something humbled me. I'm on support, I'm here to support Attorney Diane Standard for her appointment to the Human Relations Committee. And I came here with something written down this evening that my daughter turned me. She called me from Toledo, Ohio, and she's very outspoken in Toledo. And she told me that this morning, she had an opportunity to give a council member a bottle of water. And that humbled me tonight. So, I'm here to present a matter that revolves around a member of our community receiving votes from you with regards to her qualifications, Sister Diane Standard. Since the term qualification means that which includes a physical person or thing for something, I believe in fact that she needs that position to further her desires, concern, and her legitimate aspirations for our community. As a member of the NWAACP and our legal chairman, I have watched her in her efforts to cross over and close this gap of racial inequality. I have watched her ride me around town a Muslim, a black Muslim, as they call me, seeing that I get to areas of the community where our people are in distress. I have watched her show correct concern in trying to correct the impediments that is present within our community that hinders progress towards what the city manager uses the acronym, TAT, T-A-T, trust, accountability, and transparency. And I believe that her implementation in trying to get us together as one people has shown a high degree of moral excellence and civilization that is representative of what we need and what we believe can obtain a degree of discipline and unity in Durham. So, tonight, in my conclusion, I pray to Almighty God for true prosperity. Let me repeat that again, true prosperity, prosperity, in our community, one that is devoted to binding us together. So, in my conclusion, I pray to God, bless you with the light of understanding, as I leave you in peace.
I had intended to make a comment relative to the Human Relations appointment. As you probably know, we had votes at the work session, I think that was one that was tied, something like that.
I think it was three to two, wasn't it?
I don't, it was three to two, okay, whatever it was. My position on appointments, and I just think I need to say this for the public because something was written in the media about the persons that were on there. If a person is eligible to serve a second term, if a person has attended the meetings, if there's nothing outstanding against that individual, I tend to vote to reappoint the person. And I don't have anything against who, how the council voted, other persons that were applying, but that's been pretty much my position. I don't even know the lady that I voted for, honestly. She walked in here today, I don't know who she was, but what I saw was that she had attended and she had almost a hundred percent attendance and she was eligible for reappointment. So, that's the way my vote went and that's the way I voted this evening. I just thought it was important to say it wasn't because of the position she took on the Human Relations Commission.
Well, you know, if permitted, I would like to respond to that.
Well, it's not necessary to respond, I just...
I just would like to say that Mrs. Standard, not being a member of that commission, have more attendance than those on the commission as a private citizen.
Well, I appreciate that also. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you give votes on that item?
For the Durham Culture Advisory Board, Tess O'Connor has received five...
For the Durham Culture Advisory Board, Tess O'Connor has received five votes. For the Durham Planning Commission, Brian Busby, five votes. And for the Human Relations Commission appointment, Diane Standard has received four votes.
Any other items to come before the council tonight? If not, meetings adjourned at 8:00, I'm sorry, recognize.
Do we need a motion and a vote on a motion on those appointments? No, okay. Because they're usually on the consent agenda where they get approved, and in this case they were not.
No, that was the vote, though. You voted when you signed up. Yeah, yeah. Any other arguments to come before the council? If not, meetings adjourned, meetings adjourned at 8:28 PM. Thank you.